Okay.
Hopefully next time.
Why don't you even sit down, Dan?
No, I'd just like to ask you to please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First of all, my apologies for being a couple minutes late. And I'll call this regular school board meeting of Independent School District 544 to order. And the first item of business is establishing a forum. So clerk, will you please assist? I will. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole. Present. Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. Steven Venison. We have a forum. All right, thank you. Our first, next item of business is to seek an approval for the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
So both.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements and we'll offer congratulations to the Otter Boys Basketball Team for making it to the state semifinals and their coach Matt Johnston. Sorry, mask. Matt Johnson ate AA Coach of the Year. Congratulations to the state tournament participants of Caden Hartwell in wrestling, David Ronavick in Nordic skiing, Sean Erdman in swimming, Ellie Anderson, girls hockey and academic all-state, and to Ellie Kolbeck, girls basketball all-state. Congratulations to the girls' basketball coaches, Brad Strand, who's the AA Coach of the Year, and Joshua Steer, AA Assistant Coach of the Year. I'll offer this resolution, move for its adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution? Oh, and we'll turn it to you clerk for a role call, please. Natalie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole. Yes. Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. And Kirby Anderson.
Yes. Okay.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Very good. And so we'll move on to the portion of our board meeting where we review reports and correspondence from our collateral activities as board members. And we'll start with Kirby Anderson.
Yes, nothing from the finance committee today, but on the 544 Foundation, we did meet on Thursday, April 8th, this last Thursday. In March was a good month financially. We picked up about $7,000 in gifts. We also made about $18,000 in investments. So with only $5,000 expenses, so we had about $21,000. Right now, the foundation has about $1.54 million in assets. Right now, the district alumni and Hall of Fame is up in the air. We're also looking at Otter Pride Night, where I think we're still waiting to see when the homecoming date will be this fall. Looking, hopefully having a retired staff meeting this fall. We haven't had one for a year and a half or two years. Senior recognition date, I don't remember, is either May 3rd or May 10th.
May 10th.
May 10th, okay. So I've got that. And so there we will announce the scholarships that the foundation has given. And we went through all the scholarships in the meeting, but I swore to secrecy and they'll be announced on the 10th. Not a ton of applications this year. There were a couple of scholarships that didn't get awarded this year because there were no applicants or the people that applied didn't fit the criteria. But other than that, it was a pretty good, pretty good year, pretty happy. The spring and summer newsletter is going out in late April. The classroom wish list email is that time of year again. That will be going out next month before the end of the school year. The all-school reunion, we're looking at sometime in June of 2022. And that lines up with when the Big Way Event Center is available. Supposed to enter new management now. And then we spent quite a bit of time revising bylaws. That was a pretty exciting part of the meeting. And there's a mailing list. The mailing is going out right now for the Legends Golf Tournament on July 9th, which is one of the biggest, which is the biggest fundraiser, I believe, for the foundation. And our corporate sponsor is Pemberton Law Firm. And then mention was made of the Lincoln School Grand Opening on May 6th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And we will meet again on May 13th and talking about maybe getting back in person or doing a hybrid version with half and half. So any questions on the phone patient? All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I'm going to de-mask for my report, just for clarity. So Special Education Cooperative met today. We had a full board meeting. And so that constitutes a review of the activities that the executive board had undertaken the last two prior months. So we went through and had a large amount of personnel maneuvers. And that was about it. There were some employee cuts in order to meet the criteria for the budgetary cuts. And then we'll see if they're going to be rehired or how that'll shake out. But we did non-renewal of several employees today. But the gist of it was just kind of status quo. Child count numbers, staffing, all that kind of thing. So that's, nothing exciting yet. Today, or last month, the Region One Board meeting was again held by Zoom. And the Region One Board is actually a school district that provides technological and business services to school districts and other public entities, not many private entities, across kind of the western central slice of Minnesota. And so they spend, they do student tracking systems and are having great success with the synergy program that they provide being implemented in additional districts. They've been doing a lot of training with the involved school districts on Zoom and have saved so much time and find that to be quite efficient and probably not going to return to as many in-person trainings as they've had in the past. Their staff had gone, had been back in the office and got quarantined again and ready to resume office status about this time. It's just a difficult proposition to do that work from home. Let's see. There's part of the process for Region One is to get reimbursement for technological and teleconference services for smaller school districts, well, for the school districts in their region. And that's a constant process where they ask for money from the government, meet criteria and get reimbursed. It's a standard process, but it never seems to go very smoothly. And right now, they're withholding $30,000 of funds due to the small districts. But just all that kind of, usually when I give the report on Region One, I say nothing much new because it's kind of boring stuff they do. But anyway, but it's going along fine. It's a, it's a real viable school district financially and they just provide good services, but nothing exciting. And then the last piece is that on my agenda is the Activities Committee that's within the school district to talk about any questions or decision-making regarding the different various activities that we have not met. So there's nothing to report on that. Any questions on my board reports? Hearing none, we'll move right on to you, Missy Hermes.
Okay. Policy Committee has not met, but the Staff Development Committee did meet just prior to this meeting. And it was a very good meeting with a lot of discussions. So one of the things that the Staff Development Committee talked about today is moving the March staff development training to November. So that teachers and staff would be able to use that training right away at the start of the school year instead of in March, when it normally is, when, you know, although it's still useful then, maybe it would be more useful to have it in November. So that's one thing that was suggested. Second thing that we talked about was that in August, normally some of the in-service that's done at the beginning of the school year, that is decided by the district. But next year, for next August, it's going to be an in-service, a half-day for K through 6 and a half-day for 7 through 12th grade teachers for a group called Youth Frontiers and Planning. So that's what's going to be happening in August. Also brought up at this meeting today was Envoy. And that should sound familiar to a lot of us. And that a lot of the people that were at this meeting, the staff and certified and non-certified staff were thinking that, they believe that Envoy is a useful tool for classroom management and hoping that there's a way to maybe give Envoy training for people who haven't had that yet or even refresher. And it was discussed about having, should a member of the staff be a trainer for Envoy? And so there's pluses and minuses with that. But anyway, Envoy is at the front of people's minds. And they just wanted to make sure that we knew that too. One other suggestion I found interesting, I didn't know that, realize this, is that when we were talking about the committee members, so there's, this is a committee of nine plus representation from the school board and also from administrators. And there's a technology rep and Fergus Falls Education Association are all, all have members on the Staff Development Committee. And also the representation includes people from all the different buildings in the school district. And so, except for Lincoln School. And so it was proposed, maybe there should be a rep added to the staff development from Lincoln School. And then the last thing on here is, I thought, is a really exciting training that's coming up in August and a lot of our para-professionals have asked to go to it. And so staff development includes para-professionals too. And so this is going to be a workshop for STAR training. And STAR stands for Strategy for Teaching Based on Autism Research. And so this is a curriculum that is useful for the para-professionals and teachers working with our students that are on the autism spectrum, but also with other disabilities as well. And so it sounds like there's about 10 people that would be participating in that in August. Again, so that's great. It's at the beginning of the year. And it sounds like some, that the special education teachers are quite excited about having their staff take part in that training and get that. You know, sometimes we hear that about para-professionals, that they don't get enough training or that they're asked to jump right in at the beginning of the year. And here's, they're going to be fresh with these new strategies and techniques right away in, at the beginning of the school year.
That sounds good.
It's a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot. Any questions for Missy? Thank you. All right, Natalie Knudsen.
So Wellness didn't formally meet last month, but rather Jen Cohors has encouraged us to take on to a webinar series by Dr. Corey Martin out of Buffalo, Minnesota. And the series is just called Moving from Surviving to Thriving. And it's geared towards school district, but it was shared throughout the community. So I jumped on and have been enjoying that. It started out just kind of touching on like the components of gratitude and trust, but also touching on social connections, random acts of kindness. And there's two more yet to be viewed. And then her and I are also exploring some creative ways to raise money for the worksite wellness staff, just because none of the district money can be tapped into for staff purposes. So just trying to figure out how we can create a sustainable bank of money that can be utilized each year for staff wellness. And then as far as buildings and grounds, the group has not formally met, but part of strategic planning is just taking a look at all the buildings and assessing. So that's kind of a work in progress. And then Lincoln is open, but there are still some bits and pieces to tighten up. So that is my report.
All right, any questions for Natalie? Moving on, Matt Lemke, board reports?
Yeah, the Minnesota High School League will meet April 15th. That's kind of the date that I think all school districts pretty much and the public kind of pay attention because that's when the section alignments come out and are announced. So that's the date that's set for that. So they have not met, so I have nothing to report for them at this point in time. Lake Country Service Co-op Board, we did meet in March. And I don't know, I can't say the announcement per se, but they have a big announcement coming with a change in vendor for the health insurance. And there's a, and the reason they did it is because there's a, quite a bit of savings that's coming out of that for moving. And so I would say our district and other districts will see a ask if we would consider at least applying for and seeing, you know, this is kind of the year you can go up to competitive bid for RFP of services for healthcare. And I think it'll be interesting to see what will come of it. But like I said, it's quite a bit of savings. It's over a five-year contract, so it's, it's neat to see. And again, one of the things that Lake Country Service Co-op is part of is the statewide cooperative, and that's how this insurance pool has formed itself. And they've just done a lot of stuff to try to become more competitive and yet provide a better service too. So, so like I said, it'll be interesting to see how that all plays out. Other than that, just a lot of standard business stuff. And really, there isn't a whole lot that would pertain to, for reporting on as of today. So up next, my report.
Okay. Any questions for Matt? And then on you, Missy, Hannah Drake.
All right, good evening. And I'm going to unmask for my report as well, to provide a little better clarity, hopefully. We, at the last DACRAC meeting, we did hear from our Facts Department and our FIAD and Health Department. Both departments gave really nice reports. On the Family and Consumer Science side, a lot of the work that they do is directly supports initiatives in our strategic plan. And so they touched on the importance of financial literacy, teaching kids about budgeting, taxes, investing, those kinds of skills. They also touched a lot on social emotional learning, which is a huge part of their curriculum. On nutrition and wellness, our partnership with the Thrive Initiative, working with them, communication skills, study skills. That again fits very well with the district's initiatives moving forward. They also do a lot with the Minnesota Career and College Regeness Standards. And so when we talk about the Otter Success Plan and student personal plans moving forward, the Facts Department plays a big role in that work and helping students be familiar with the world of work and how you can set aside or establish a plan to get you from where you are currently to picking the high school courses that will prepare you for the path that you intend to take for a career once you leave high school. And then the last big component that Family and Consumer Science touched about was child development. And we do have an articulation agreement with Alexandria Career and Technical College for a child development course. We are in conversations with M State about developing an articulation agreement with them. And this also is tied into a potential future partnership where we use the Lincoln School Early Childhood Center as a learning lab for not only our students that have an interest in early childhood education, but potentially also students enrolled in M State that could use that as an experiential lab as well. And so we know that finding employees in some of those areas can be kind of challenging. And this kind of follows along with the Grow Your Own philosophy or strategy to help ensure that there are people that are trained and interested and available for those kinds of jobs. So again, a really nice report from the Facts Department. On the FIAD side, we talked about the district's ongoing commitment to physical activity. Our students' grades K through 5 get 25 minutes a day for FIAD. As you start out with the younger students, it's focusing on locomotor skills. And then things progress there from stretching to other more physical fitness-type activities that would eventually include cardiovascular training as well as weight training. And then as you get higher up, once you get into 6th grade and the junior high, then you start to see more team-based activities. So whether it's, you know, wrestling, basketball, football skills, all those kind of traditional sports that you associate, they teach the rules of the game and the kids get a chance to play. Also, the swimming pool allows us to have a nice exposure there with teaching kids how to swim, water survival skills, tag games, water polo, water basketball. And then when you get into the high school, you end up having an opportunity for various elective choices. We do have a high school PE, which our 9th graders tend to take. But we also have personal fitness, lifetime recreation, strength training 1 and 2, social dance class, team sports, and occasionally, it's not been offered recently, but water fitness. And then we also offer DAP for those students that have various physical disabilities to make sure that they get an appropriate physical education experience as well. Then on the health side, we do have an elementary health curriculum. And those end up following a lot of social emotional learning type curriculum pieces. And then as you progress through the upper grades in our health, it focuses more on Great Body Shop, where there are booklets that the students complete 5th and 6th grade. And then in the middle and high school, it's more on self-esteem, communication, nutrition, healthy eating habits, physical fitness, all those things that are in line for wellness and long-term physical health moving forward. So that was the last DACRAC meeting. We've also been very busy this year, and I really want to thank John Steinbrenner and Hannah Lehman for their leadership and guidance in conjunction with our Science Department on the new science adoption. The state had announced about a year or so ago, the new science standards moving forward. There's been a lot of work analyzing the new science standards. It's very much a hands-on experiential instructional approach that's tied to the new standards. And we needed to look at new curriculum that would align to it and then talk about an implementation schedule moving forward. K through 2 considered two kind of finalist curriculum. One was mystery science and the other one was FOS science. In the end, K through 2 selected mystery science. That's a six-year subscription for a total of about $20,000. And then there's additional supply packs that are purchased at about $8,000 annually to support the students' curriculum there. FOS was, the FOS science was an eight-year purchase, grades 3 through 5. And that was, came out to just under $75,000. 6 through 8 went with McGraw-Hill Inspire Science. That's about $101,000 over eight years. That's going to cover Earth and Space, Life Science and Physical Science. Then 9 through 12 went with McGraw-Hill again, Inspire Science, eight years, about $89,000. That's going to cover more advanced Earth science, physics, biology and chemistry foundations. There are a couple other smaller components to support environmental science and the college physics course and some technology requests as well to support instruction. And as a district, we did make a decision to break this up a little bit differently than what has been done in the past. Historically, the technology that went into supporting the curriculum purchases all came out of the curriculum budget. This year, we've separated the technology, so there's a technology budget separate and there's a curriculum budget. So all told, we do have additional resources to curriculum and instruction and technology to support that coming into fiscal year '22 than we have had in the past. We've started prioritizing some of the purchases there. And it's going to, I think the teachers are going to really appreciate the additional support with updated machines, et cetera, in their classrooms. So before I go into just my regular superintendent's report, is, are there any questions on the curriculum side? All right, with my regular board report, I do want to thank all the teachers and staff, Title, AdSys, RTI Services for all their work in preparing our students to do well on the MCA tests that are ongoing. This is a huge spring task to tackle, made a little bit more challenging. We talked about this today, when some of our classes have been quarantined recently, having to juggle that testing calendar a little bit. But appreciate all the work and preparation that's gone into this. Again, my congratulations to the boys' basketball team and coaching staff on a phenomenal season. We had a chance to listen to the Pet Band play and watch it in the auditorium. And I can tell you, the announcers spoke very, very highly, not only of our basketball team, but our Fergus Falls community. And it was really a nice, nice piece of media coverage for our school and city. Other events that are coming up this month that we're very excited about is Dollars for Scholars. We'll be doing their annual scholarship presentations on April 28th. That program will go from 1:00 p.m. to 2:30. We're scheduled to have the celebration of the new softball field that we're very excited about. That will be on the afternoon, early evening of April 27th, weather permitting. But we're very excited about that. On the COVID-19 side, we've continued to see in our local community, our numbers moving up still. We were a little bit over 31 here on our last two-week period. We have seen an additional number of cases of quarantining lately. I had mentioned here about the last seven days, we had quarantined five classrooms independently. We're still running here, kind of in that last week was eight cases. It had been 10, 11 cases district-wide. We are not seeing still mass spread of what may be a variant to the original virus. And our mitigation efforts seem to still be, I would say, very, very successful. But on a precautionary note, we are being very diligent in the quarantining, et cetera, as we learn of positive cases in the school district. On the strategic planning side, we have a Student Climate and Culture Committee. That, those recommendations are done, but the Facilities Committee is ongoing. We toured Roosevelt School the other day, last Thursday evening. Some of us stayed to take a trip down into the tunnels. That was an interesting kind of... That was an interesting kind of side tour. But we do have water issues, certainly that have been present for a long time. You can see water coming up through the floor and draining out through some of the lower walls in Roosevelt. It is, the moisture problems are causing some issues with our plumbing system, especially out on that old varsity gym side of the building. Our next Facilities Committee meeting will tour both Lincoln, excuse me, not Lincoln, but McKinley and Adams. And then we'll really be rolling our sleeves up and talking through some of the advantages and disadvantages of our current facilities and setting a path forward with recommendations to the board. As mentioned earlier, we do have the May 6 Open House and Ribbon Cutting Ceremony at Lincoln School. Melissa Amundson wrote a special grant to bring in a metro artist that focuses specifically on art for early childhood students. And so that will be part of that opening celebration of Lincoln School. We're pleased that our partners at Children's Corner are out there now too with their students. And there are a few things on the punch list that still need to be taken care of, but we are making progress. So certainly available to entertain any questions at this time.
There was a news release, I think, two days ago. Minnesota Parent Education has requested from the federal government to not use the MCA scores to identify underperforming schools this year. And I think that's been granted. So basically what they're saying is any funds that are given to underperforming schools will be based on last year's information, the same school, same month. And then school identification in 2022 will be based on the MCA results from this year, also graduation rates and attendance data, but only from '18, '19, and '21, '22 school years, basically pandemic years.
So hold harmless, basically, kind of approach.
Yep.
That makes sense, especially with the number of metro districts that really have not been able to do any in-person instruction this year.
Yep. I have one other thing. I noticed, I already talked to Elaine about this. Elaine sent out our board pack the last Thursday night at like 7:51 PM. And I know that we've been in, I just wanted to thank you and Elaine for the hard work you've been doing. And anybody who thinks this is an eight-to-five job here working at this school is wrong because Elaine had to come in in the evening and send it out. I saw your weekly report coming out Saturday morning at 5:28 AM. So, and I mean, I sat in with both of you in meetings all day on Friday, and I know Matt and Natalie were in with you all day today. And now you're here tonight, and I just wanted to say thank you and just let people know that it's not an eight-to-five job for our admin team. It's way more than that. Appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks for beating me to that. No questions then for the superintendent on his report? All right, we'll move with our general consent items for consideration for approval in this segment of the meeting, our minutes from our March 22 board meeting, and then bills and treasurers report.
Yes, we had an unusual meeting today between Blake and I and Missy. Blake was not feeling well this morning, so he got ahold of me and I came in at 10:00 and I spent better than an hour with him on the treasures of the monthly bills as well as a couple of other things. And then Missy was in, in visiting later. So we'll just go through the list. Some of the things that were highlighted, $23,000 was the final payment to Cooper's office supplier for the furniture at Lincoln. So we're starting to see the Lincoln thing wind down. We did have our nine and 10 payments went to Comstock for just over $400,000. We do have about, about just under $400,000 left on the last one, and that will be dependent on them getting the punch list done and everything. So that will be done. And let's see. You mentioned some of the plumbing over at Roosevelt, and that came up here because we've got some Anytime Plumbing thing with the water heater over Roosevelt and the showers, thirteen, almost $14,000 on us. And the guys at Anytime are getting to be kind of our regular plumbers now, and they're saying it's kind of like the old Penzo commercials, you pay an hour pay later, and we're kind of paying now for maintenance for that facility. So don't be, they're basically saying, don't be surprised if there's more of that coming along. Let's see, Lincoln Cleaning Supply, cleaning equivalent, $20,000. Got a pass-through on Indigenous Enterprise, I think that was for the staff development. I think Ferretel County was involved with that one. Had some printer repair. We still have some personal printers around the buildings, and so there was $1,350 of repairs on those. Trafara, we have a management license for $6,000, and we bought another $58,000 in Chromebooks. And train, there were some mechanical things, I believe it was on Kinley, and maybe someone else knows more than I do about that. There was a multi-stack module that had to be replaced on the HVAC system. Fund balance, pretty good shape compared to last month. The general fund is up about $800,000. And Blake is going to start doing a year-over-year balance comparison. So I think starting next month, at this time, we'll see a comparison for the end of May, what our snapshot is at this point in time in May versus what it was last year in May. Because the school expenses tend to go like this, but they tend to follow the same curve every year, that money coming in. I feel they change it, but a lot of the same expenses go off in the same months every year, every school year. So he's going to start doing that. And then I did talk to him a little bit about some of the other things that we have on our agenda tonight, the Liberty thing, the AMP thing, and some of the things that are in our meeting.
Work session?
Work session, I'm sorry, thank you. About to land this, the budget, so I'll try and address those things in a month. Enjoyed visiting with Blake today, I was in there for almost an hour. The young guy, for only being here a little, a short period of time, he continues to impress me, so. Can I say that when he's not here? And you know it's real. All right, that's all I have for the board or the treasurer's board, unless somebody has a question. Missy, do you have anything to add?
No, I covered it.
Okay, thank you.
And then turn to our HR Director, Elaine Johnson, for the personnel changes.
Good evening, everyone. Items here for your approval would be, first off, certified staff hire of Madison Erickson, special ed teacher, and this will be effective for the new school year starting in August. Support staff resignation, Danielle Zens, par educator at Adams, effective at the end of the school year. And then support staff retirements. I have two, Trish Martin, special ed para at Cleveland, and that's effective at the end of the school year also. And then Donna Filippello, food service, and that's effective today, and she has worked here at Kennedy Secondary School. Both Trish and Donna have resolutions later on in the agenda regarding their retirement. So I would request for approval for these personnel actions.
All right. Is there someone willing to offer a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
And a second?
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the items? All right. Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. And we'll move right into new business. This is lengthy, so I'm going to read a resolution discontinuing and reducing educational positions and programs. Anyone who's listening, please know this is an annual resolution required if we later intend to make cuts. This is the basis for it, so there, it usually shakes out a little different, but it starts, this starts the process. So whereas the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 adopted a resolution on January 25, 2021, directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions, and whereas said recommendations have been received and considered by the School Board, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 544 as follows. That the following programs and positions or portions thereof be discontinued, and this is district-wide, which includes IQ Academy. Certified staff positions, 7.024 full-time equivalents, including an A through G, and I'll read them without the, oh yeah, A through G, including an elementary class size reduction, one full-time position. Elementary positions, 2.5289, equivalent to full-time position, so not quite full. Work experience is getting cut, .866 full-time equivalents. Health cut, .1667 full-time equivalent. Special ed, .2950 full-time equivalent. Math and science, one full position. Middle school assistant principal, 1.1667 full-time equivalent. So those are the cuts. And then support staff positions, 3.87 full-time equivalent positions, including student support aides at 1.87 full-time equivalents, and special ed paraprofessionals for two full-time positions. So will someone be willing to offer this resolution and move for its adoption?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion on the pets? Anybody want to offer questions or any kind of explanatory? This is the first round, is that fair enough to say? Okay, hearing no questions or comments, then clerk, will you please take roll call? Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Looking for a motion to renew the workers' compensation consulting service agreement between our school district and USI Insurance Services LLC, which would be effective May 1, 2021 to May 1, 2022. Would someone be willing to offer that motion? So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Kirby, are you equipped, since Blake normally would say?
I am, yeah. I mean, this is just a consulting agreement, and it's $950 a month, so we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
It would be almost, it'd be about $10,000, but not $10,000. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it was in the package, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Right. That's right, it's kind of that watch from root.
Yep.
Correct. Right, okay. Any other comments? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. Looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 curriculum recommendations? Would someone offer that motion? So moved. And a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion on that item?
This is a science curriculum, it's just complicated.
Yeah, thank you.
It's perfect.
Okay. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved. Looking for a motion to approve a .6 full-time equivalent special ed paraprofessional position at Cleveland School, and to increase in contract to full-time for Andrea Legering, a special ed paraprofessional. Looking for that motion, would somebody be willing to make that?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
And any discussion on this? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. Looking for a motion on number five, lease with Liberty Business Copier Equipment for 60 months for the school district. This too is in our package, is someone willing to make that motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion there?
Can I address the board on this one? Is that allowed?
It's not allowed per the rules. The, our policy requires kind of an advance notification if there's input for the board so that we have a chance to prepare for any kind of commentary. Certainly would welcome opportunity to communicate about this after the board, though, if that was acceptable. And then, and then just for informational purposes, anytime a citizen wants to speak with the board, just to call Elaine Johnson in advance, get it on the agenda, and we'll accommodate.
Okay.
Is that acceptable? Any other comments or questions from the board? All right. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And then next is a motion, seeking a motion to request to approve Eric Johnson AMP Insurance as the insurance agent of record effective for the 2021 school year. Would someone make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
All right, and a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion there? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And then we have a resolution on the retirement of Trish or Patricia Martin. Whereas Trish Martin began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 2012, and whereas Trish has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past nine years, whereas Trish has done an excellent job as a special education paraprofessional for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Trish Martin for her nine years of dedicated service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take roll, please? Yes. Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. All right. Last item on the new business agenda, resolution on the retirement of Donna Filippello. Whereas Donna Filippello began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in March 2016, and whereas Donna has been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past five years, whereas Donna has done an excellent job in her school's district's food service, and will now therefore be it resolved by Fergus Falls School Board to thank Donna Filippello for five years of dedicated service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion? All right, clerk? Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Resolution is adopted. All right, thank you. That concludes the regular school board meeting. We'll meet again on Monday, April 26, and for our next regular board meeting at 5:15, possibly in the outer community room. The board will stick around after this for a work session with several items on the agenda, including backboard update, leasing some space to the state motor vehicle services, a land lease, and then again talk about the budget. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Sorry.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.